Full house today. We have a bunch of presentations and ceremonies today, so we're very happy to see all of you. This is the meeting of the Provo Municipal Council. We are revised to add item seven and continue to item nine, just so you guys know from our original agenda. It is 5:31 Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. Our elected officials are Travis Hoben, Councilor Becky Bogdan, Councilor George Handley, Rachel Whipple, myself, Catrice McKay, Craig Christensen, and Gary Garrett. The opening prayer will be provided by Abby Kirkstent, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by myself, Catrice McKay. And Abby, you can come right up to the mic.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're so very thankful for this opportunity that we can meet together as a Provo community. We're so very thankful for Provo and all the things that we have accomplished as a community, and we pray that we can help support each other as we continue to do more and more things. We love thee and we say these things in the name of Christ Jesus.
Amen. Thank you so much, Abby. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and the Mayor Michelle Kofusi has joined us. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After such, after each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comments on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium, and those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and the city of residence, and you'll have two minutes to speak. So if anyone wishes to do public comment at this time, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we will go on to Employee of the Month, and this will be presented by the Mayor, Michelle Kofusi.
All right, Chair McKay and Vice Chair Whipple, members of the Municipal Council. Today, we have another exciting opportunity to recognize an employee who has demonstrated exceptional care in our exceptional community. I'm happy to introduce our Police Chief, Chief Beebe, who will be presenting our March 2024 Employee of the Month Award to an outstanding individual in our police department. So on that note, I'll turn the time to you, Chief.
And I'd like Doris to come forward if she would. Doris, Doris is a leader amongst us. She has served the city of Provo, specifically the police department, for 33 years. She is, her sense of duty is remarkable. She's over our evidence, and in that 33 years, she's never lost a piece of evidence. The state requires that we audit annually. Doris goes above and beyond and audits monthly. She goes above and beyond. She's respectful and respected, and when I say a quiet leader, I mean she doesn't have to say much to get her point across. Her ability to be selfless is incredible to her employees that she supervises. I received many comments, all of them are tender, but she's very well-loved amongst her staff. She's honorable, she has integrity, and her personal courage to continue is always great. I asked for several nominations, and Captain Watcott provided a very good nomination. And I've not planned to read that, all of it, but I would like to read just a piece. And it's, as I, as I inquired from other people why Ms. Grant should receive this award, most of the comments included something like, because she's Doris. This is like the reference the chief made to the Provo way. It's hard to define because it encompasses a lot, but when you know Doris, you know what they're talking about when they say, when they say this. It's, it's comments to the, it's commitment to the job. It's saying staying the course, it's having a great attitude, it's having great organizational skills, it's having ownership of your area, it's being flexible when that's needed, it's being a problem solver, it's being professional, it's being Doris. And I agree with that statement greatly, so it's my honor to present her.
Why don't we come down and get a picture with Doris? Because again, another Chief Beebe insists we take pictures of him.
All right, we're now going to move on to the swearing-in of new firefighters, which is very exciting. We, we love seeing the new police and the new firefighters and getting to learn a bit about them. But this will be presented by Chief Jeremy Hedman.
Good evening. It's an honor to speak before you again with some new firefighters. We've got three new firefighters that hopefully aren't going to have to leave on a call. No, we've got them committed to this, but it's, it's one of the most important things we do is hire the right people, and we've, we've hired three amazing young men that we'll introduce to you today. They've been through a rigorous eight-week training camp, where they came to us with firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT skills, but we've taken those skills and fine-tuned them to the way we want them to perform as Provo firefighter. And then from here, they'll go out and they will work hand-in-hand with our crews for the next year as their probationary year, and we'll continue their training on through. If I could offer these three firefighters some advice, it would be to bottle that passion and that desire that they have right now and keep that and, and open that up in 10 years and refresh themselves with the passion that, that can stay there for a career-long passion. This is such a wonderful career, and I say it all the time to the firefighters. If you're not loving what you're doing, you're doing it wrong, because this is an amazing career. I would like to start out by introducing Bryce Hardy. Bryce, if you'll come up. Bryce is a 24-year-old. He lives here in Provo. He was born and raised in Southern California. He's the youngest of six siblings. Bryce moved to Utah to go to school to pursue his career in the fire service. He is currently going to school to get his bachelor's degree in emergency services. He enjoys watching UFC and going on trips with his wife. Bryce is married to Katie, and they have been married for just over a year. She's a registered behavioral technician for kids with autism. They're grateful they have found a place here in Utah, and Bryce is looking forward to serving the community here in Provo. Katie, if you'll come up and pin the badge on Bryce.
Thank you.
Liked invite Hayden Anderson to come up. Hayden is a young man from Wellsburg, Utah. He was originally born in Cape Coast, Ghana, in West Africa. He and his twin brother were adopted by Patty and Eric Anderson at the age of two, and he's lived in Wellsburg ever since. Hayden loves riding horses, training horses, and doing anything outside. He loves doing those activities, especially with his family. Some of his best memories are rodeos with his parents and two younger brothers, who are also adopted from Ghana. Hayden says he feels he has been blessed abundantly with his life, and after serving his mission in Ghana, he decided he would like to try to give back to the world, and that is, that has given him so much. He looks forward to learning and growing with the fire service and would like to thank everyone who's helped him and encouraged him to become a firefighter, as well as his parents, for the love and support they've shown for him and allowing him to chase his dreams. Patty, will you come up and pin the badge on Hayden? Patty is Hayden's mother. And finally, I'd like to invite Zach Mortimer to come up. Zach was born in Sacramento and raised in Cottonwood Heights. All his family lives in Utah and the Salt Lake Valley. Zach likes being on the move and constantly learning, and firefighting provides a good outlet for that. I enjoy, he enjoys being outside and likes to go rock climbing and snowboarding, and he's a big football guy. However, his favorite thing to do is to hang out with his friends. He's decided to become a firefighter for a few reasons, and his friends were a big part of that. He's always enjoyed helping people, and he knew he, he needed to do something in life where that was his purpose. One of Zach's friends asked him a couple of years ago what he wanted to do as per a career, and firefighting was mentioned, so Zach ran with it, found that he loved it, and finds it very fulfilling. Zach likes to stay in shape, and firefighting helps him with that. He always, he's always been interested in the medical field, as his dad is in the medical field as well. And he vividly remembers as a kid that his dad would bring home VHS tapes of various open-heart surgeries and thinking, wow, that's cool. He feels extremely lucky to have the people around him that he has and to have the opportunities to, to get to where he's at now. Zach is very excited to be a Provo firefighter and can't wait to keep learning and become better than he was the day before. I'd like to ask Becky, his mom, to come up and pin his badge on. Welcome to Provo Fire. It's an honor to have you a part of our family. And Heidi, if you'll come in, come up and swear them in. Maybe, should I have them huddle around this? Or if you want it. Okay, come, stand right there.
I have to solemnly swear.
Support, obey, and defend.
I have support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
That I discharge the duties.
That I discharge the duties.
Of my office with the devil.
Of my office and ability.
Stand, and we'll do a picture.
Hold on, this mic wasn't, wait, 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 sorry, the mic was in the way. I am short. I apologize. Okay. One, two, three, four. There we go.
Hey, for those here with fire, there will be a little celebration in the community room across the hall. And we're excited. Thank you so much. All right, next we have BYU Geospatial Services Class Report of Provo Tree Cover. And I don't think this should make me cry, so that's great. And it's going to be presented by Teresa Gomez. Is Tracy here? Okay, great.
Okay, just perfect. All right, I'm coming with a big group of students here, so yeah. My name is Teresa Gomez. I'm the head of the Geospatial Services and Training Lab in the BYU library. And I'm here with my students to present the results of a project that we've been working on for a couple of months with the Major Sustainability Committee. We were, where they reached out, Don Jarvis and Hannah Salsa reached out to us a couple of months ago to see if we could help them figure out the tree kind of recover for Provo City. This is a very important benchmark for the Resiliency and Conservation and Resiliency Plan. So this is an important piece that we didn't have to keep going with our plan or to put as part of the plan. And with the technology and the expertise that we have with our BYU students, we were able to help them, and this was a great opportunity for all of us, me as the supervisor of the students and my students themselves to contribute to our community, to learn more things, and to just do what we love, which is to make maps. So I'm going to let my students keep going, but here's the clicker, and I'm very proud of the work they've done, so listen.
Okay, so my name is Josh Newman. I'm one of five students that work in the Geospatial Services Lab, along with Andrew Miller, Jacob Bellows, Matthew Rowley, and Abby Kirkstent. And we come from a variety of different backgrounds in terms of, you know, where we grew up and also our majors. So myself, I am a Geospatial Science and Technology major in BYU's Geography Department, and, but we also have Biodiversity and Conservation majors and Environmental Science. And what brings us together is that passion for geography. And what we do is we help those students and professors as well with their various GIS or Geographic Information Systems projects. And one of the things that we encourage our patrons to do is to develop a love of maps, because we wholeheartedly believe in the power of maps.
Maps are awesome, just like they were used right when you were traveling across the seas. We still use them so much now. Now it's more definitely on our phones though, right? But with maps, even when we don't think we're using them, we're using them so much more. They help you see what you aren't able to see before, and they help you visualize your data a lot of the times. Provo actually has an amazing map gallery showing all different things for your house, your property, the zoning, and also like in the cemetery, probably thanks to a mayor who studied geography. But with those maps, it's all made through geographic information systems. And that is a really big word, and that explains maps. And a lot of times, people are like, we already have maps. I already know where I'm going, right? But there are actually so many uses, whether you're Amazon, Zillow, or other big corporations, they use maps. All of the data we get can be through aerial images, which we did for this project, which Matthew will talk about, but also through census data. So if you want to start a new company, a new business, we can tell you the demographic of people who would be interested in that, where to put that, and all of those things. And GIS helps create and show you that data and can help you guys in your work.
So as Abby mentioned, we were able to use GIS to calculate the tree coverage in Provo City as we were asked to do. It took us a little while, and we had to be able to find the right data and find the right way to do it, the right workflow, but we were able to do it eventually using a couple of different types of data. So if you haven't heard of LiDAR data, that's the first type of data that we found. It's available for Provo City, and it's basically telling you about the terrain of whatever area you're studying. So a plane will fly over Provo City, for example, and it has a laser attached to it that will send a beam down, and that laser will bounce back to the, to the plane in different ways, depending on if it hits a tree or a house or a car or asphalt or grass. And that gives us a 3D picture of what the landscape is like. So we used LiDAR data in conjunction with aerial imagery from the National Agricultural Imagery Program, and we used that aerial imagery to get an idea of what we could see visually below that LiDAR data. So where the trees were in terms of what the plane saw when it flew over and just took a picture. We were able to combine those data to figure out where the trees were. So to do that, we isolated the points in the LiDAR that represented trees. Essentially, there are different LiDAR classes, and based on how the laser bounced back, like I mentioned, you can determine what is there, and so we were able to determine where the trees were with the LiDAR. But we wanted to make sure that we were getting those locations right, and so we located the living vegetation using the aerial imagery, so we were able to find the healthy green vegetation and isolate that. And then by combining or stacking those two data sets together, we found all of the living, healthy, green trees in Provo, and we turned that into a polygon and, or a bunch of polygons, and we were able to calculate the area of that and figure out a percentage of the area of Provo, which turned out to be about 17%. And that matched pretty well with what Google actually found. So we were able to confirm, confirm that it was a good estimate of the tree cover, and it kind of got us curious, and as well as some of the geography faculty, as to what the other 83% of Provo was covered in, and that led to the second half of this project that Andrew will tell us about.
Okay, um, oh, here we are. So tree cover is just one aspect of land cover of Provo. And so we went ahead and were able to use imagery, use the previous tree cover, and use building footprints, and ran it through a GIS software, like mapping software, and this model. So we were able to create what we call land cover classification, which categorizes all of Provo into a certain number of categories. What we have in here is water, trees, asphalt slash concrete, buildings, like dead grass or like shrubland. And so we were able to use like the, the image, like the pixel values in the images to determine this land cover of all of Provo. And so you can use this for a variety of things. We can use this for research, use it for future projects, and it's just a very useful tool to, you know, get a grasp of what, of what Provo is.
Yeah, so maps are a window to seeing Provo in a new way, and that was what our project was set to do, was we were set out, we set out to figure out where the trees were in Provo and also where the roads and buildings are. And by doing that, we gained a newer and more profound understanding of our community as Provo and our relationship with the environment and with, with, with infrastructure and with our businesses. And maps give us this ability to see the world in a new light so that we can figure out these connections and really be united as one. And we are so grateful that as BYU students, to be able to help our community, to understand Provo and to achieve our goals in creating a better and more green environment. And we thank you for this opportunity that we were given.
Thank you very much. That's, that's all we got. I don't know if there's time for questions or anything like that.
Um, yeah, we'll see if the council have questions. I know I had a question. So like I saw 17%, and I was like, oh, I wanted to be higher. But then I wondered, what is normal? Like, what are other comparisons? Was there any information on that by way of like on a national level at all?
I'm not sure, but Hannah is sure, and she told me that that's actually a pretty decent number of where we should be, right? So I'll watch you there.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I don't know how many of you were here for the initial versions of the Conservation Resiliency Plan, but the initial goal for, that we were setting for 2030 was 15% total coverage.
Wow.
And that is what's recommended for a city in our area, what's pretty average. We think trees are especially important in our community, so we changed that to, instead of 15% total, let's make it 15% of whatever we've got now. Let's just keep inching forward as we're going, which sets us up for a goal of around 19% by 2030. And our urban forester says that's definitely ambitious, but so is he, and we can do that.
All right, thanks, Hannah. Anyone have questions? Gary Garrett.
I had the same question, Chair McKay, but I also wanted to thank the team for their work. I found it very interesting and exciting to review. I even engaged my wife. Come look at this work, and guess what the tree cover is in Provo? She guessed an optimistic 30%, but it was fun to look at the map. And Millie, if you could put the green map up there again, you could see, looking at the map, the other one, the first one. You could, you could pick out obviously the, you just passed it.
Yeah, it was two up.
Right there. You could pick out the Provo River, you could pick out south of campus, the Botany Pond. You could pick out north of campus, that oval, the stadium where there's no tree cover. And I think maybe appropriately, you could pick up that heavier concentration of tree cover in the tree streets.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm just so grateful that we have this resource to help us so that we can have good numbers. Yeah, I'm just so grateful that we have this resource to help us so that we can have good numbers as we're doing our long-term planning and everything, so we're not just guessing on this. And I really appreciate the the partnership with BYU and all the work of those students. Also, I am super impressed by your deep and abiding love of maps and GIS. And that makes me feel very happy. Thank you for sharing that.
All right. Next, we have Mecca Knights' First Tech Challenge Robotics Presentation and Discussion of STEM in the Community. This will be presented by Catherine Thompson and she is the Mecca Knights Outreach Coordinator.
Okay, so um hi, we're the Mecca Knights. We're part of a program called FIRST Robotics. And we have fifteen team members total. Not all of them could make it, but we have a good chunk. And we are actually majority female. Um so FIRST is a program where teams are challenged to raise funds, design a team brand, hone teamwork skills, and build and program a robot for a difficult field game against other teams. Personally, through this program, I have gained close friends, learned skills in graphic design and team marketing. And here's a little about the rest of our team.
Outreach is about connecting with the STEM community and educating people about FIRST and our team. We have attended many events like Provo City Farmers Markets, where we gave robot demos and got kids interested in STEM. We have also hosted many events at our school, like the FPA Qualifier, which some of you attended. At these events, we have got many schools and teams from Idaho to all over Utah. Me personally, I have became more comfortable with talking to adults, which I've used that skill to take feedback and apply it to better myself.
Um this is my first year on robotics and being a part of the team has really helped me to gain new skills in communication and optimizing our events to reach more of the community. Uh it has also given me the confidence to join the programming team next year. Um this year at the state championships, we placed second in design and third in our portfolio award. And our assistant coach, Mr. Larson, um what uh placed in the coaching award. Um also, our team captain Kate and A C was placed at or announced as a Dean's List. And um or sorry, he placed in Dean's List, which is basically like a stirring scholar for robotics and hopes to represent Utah in the World State Championship.
This is our robot, Trevy Shay. The aspect of this game is to place these pixels across the field on a backboard. The most innovative part of our robot is the intake. The combination of our unique U-shaped front plate and our unique U-shaped stack holder allows us to pick up pixels from the bottom of the pixel stack. This is advantageous because it helps us clear congestion in the wings. We also have an airplane launcher and a robot hanging on our robot.
Um another innovative part of our robot is the front lip. Um we noticed that frequently it got bent, so we problem solved this by making it easily replaceable. So we could like replace every match. Um and we also have the compliance wheels, like the green wheel right there. They help us grab the pixels one at a time for like more control. And we also have those side panels for solid look.
Hello. Um we are asking um for a direct and personal connection to um decision makers in local STEM businesses. With doing this, we can gain mentors, sponsorships, and opportunities for um robotics graduates to join um jobs and internships. Um we are also asking for a teen version of Provology with us as the first cohort. Um through this, we will learn a deeper understanding of the STEM systems that are used to keep the um Provo City running smoothly and we want to learn more deeply about them.
We would also appreciate an introduction to Provo City School District um Decision Makers. We would like this opportunity to discuss uh opportunities to hold more STEM camps, more in-classroom robot demos, and the further opportunity to create and coach more FTC teams here in Utah. Because currently, we do not have any record of there being any FTC teams in uh Provo City School District Schools. We also would like to invite all of you to come to uh the Wasatch Mountain Invitational this summer. It the dates are June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And this event is um for teams all over Utah and Idaho to come and give the season one last hurrah before we move on to the next season. Uh would we be able to contact you personally about any of these four asks?
I you'll have to email our staff. So as you guys leave, you can share your emails. And I think you've been communicating with them. So you can just forward that on. Thank you.
Um and do you have any questions for our team or about what we do?
Craig Christensen.
Not so much a question, but just such admiration. Uh getting a chance to see you guys at work in the competition was just remarkable. I would love to see this uh spread across the schools here in Provo. Um Provo deserves your talent.
Gary Garrett.
Where will the regional competition be held in June?
Um this will be at our school at Freedom Preparatory Academy.
Close by.
Thank you so much, guys. We appreciate you coming. All right, we are going to move on now to an action item. This is an implied motion on a resolution appointing individuals to the Board of the Metropolitan Water District of Provo. This will be presented by Brian Jones, the city attorney.
Chair McKay, Mayor Kufusi, members of the council. Uh this is um one that I think gets tasked to me and not meant so much because I have anything to do with it, but just because it's a little bit of an oddity. The Metropolitan Water District of Provo is a separate legal entity that is not directly affiliated with the city, but it's created by um created under state law. And state law, despite its independence, grants to the Provo City Council the responsibility of appointing the members of this board. And also different than most appointments that you consider, because this one is not advice and consent on an appointment by the mayor. But you as the council council members actually um make the make the decision and appoint. In this particular case, there are three openings, all uh resulting from the fact that current members, the previous members' terms ended. You followed the statutory uh requirements for opening up applications and received three applications from the three former appointees. Uh and in this case, state law actually requires you to fill the spots if you have sufficient applicants to do so. So uh at this point, you have a resolution in front of you to reappoint the three previous members to fill their own seats. Any questions I can answer for you? Okay.
All right. Any council discussion of this item? Rachel Whipple.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I had previously served on this board and now I'm the council liaison to it. So I've been able to sit in meetings with all three of these former board members and appointees. And they are all good, valuable people who bring knowledge and expertise to the board and curiosity and everything that we need to have a good functioning Board of Trustees. So I'm very, very happy that all of them are choosing to extend their service.
We generally extend the service of the water board because institutional knowledge is so important on that board. It's very specific knowledge that they have. All right. We'll do a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously, seven oh. Next, we have an implied motion and ordinance creating a Department of Human Resources. This will also be presented by Brian Jones.
Oh, sorry, Brian. I jumped ahead of you. No. It's the big deal ones.
Well, I'll I'll let the mayor uh actually announce the or address probably the most important points if she wants to make a comment afterwards. But um if you look back at city code in two thousand ten, uh at that time, there were actually a significant number of more departments than there are now. During the two thousand ten year, the Department of um Human Res- the then existing Department of Human Resources and the Department of Information Systems were rolled into the Department of Administrative Services. And at that point in time, all of the current divisions of Public Works were actually their own departments and they were rolled into one Public Works Department. So that's been the that's been the status since two thousand ten. But during this last year, there's been some discussion. There has been, the mayor has a has gone out and done the work to look at best practices and to consider whether uh it's really the best practice to have a human resources uh division that is subordinate to another department and has decided that that's not the case and it's in the best interest of the employees and the city to have that department separated out. So this, what is before you is an ordinance amending the code to take the Division of Human Resources and instead make it the Department of Re- of Human Resources. Answer any questions about that?
Any questions for Brian? All right, we'll open up this item up for public comment. All right, um mayor, did you want to present something?
Yes. So it's such a great night and because we're doing kind of the combo deal tonight, I am going to just read a little bit about Daniel Softly. And after that, I'll ask for your advice and consent. And then after that, we'll bring up Daniel and his lovely wife, Kim. And we'll have our new Judge Schreiner do his first swearing in as our new judge. So it's just a big night. We're really excited about it. But let me spotlight Daniel.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. They haven't actually voted on creating the department.
Okay, okay. I was wondering, sorry. We probably need to do that first, right?
Yeah, so we need to we need to vote on the ordinance first. I don't know if you had any uh comments you wanted to add about the creation of the department, but we need to vote on that one first.
Just we've talked about it a couple of times now and I really do feel strongly after doing a lot of research and meeting with both governmental and private sector companies, that this is the right path forward and this is the right decision to do. And so with that, I guess we will ask for your advice and consent on this new ordinance.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Um any council discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay. Yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
And Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Right, that's seven zero. That's unanimous. Um so on to our next one, a resolution consenting to the mayor's appointment of the Human Resources Director for Provo City.
So like I said, this is just like a lot of moving parts all rolled into one tonight. So now that we have made the change in um the code, now I will present to you who I have chosen. So let me just read briefly a little bit about how fantastic Daniel Softly is. So Danley Soft- Daniel Softly has been with Provo City since October eleventh, two thousand and has over twenty-three years of experience serving in the Human Resources Department. He holds a master's degree in public administration from Brigham Young University, where he received the Lenis M. Knighton Award for having the highest GPA in his graduating class. He was initially hired as an analyst and within several years was appointed to a senior level position. He has been serving in the role of Human Resource Director over eight years, having beat out an impressive list of candidates for the position. He loves hockey and if you don't know that, he'll talk to you a lot about hockey. He loves hockey and is an avid player. Anyone who visits his office will be impressed by the array of items on display. He is also known for being an enthusiastic decorator for the holidays. If you stop by his home on Halloween, his favorite holiday, you will find him in full costume, homemade and unique each season, blending in with the yard decorations, much to the surprise of unsuspecting trick-or-treaters. He also terrifies me every year when the city dresses up. He's terrifying. But he does such a good job at it. It's really fun to always see what he's gonna come up with every year. Daniel has played a key role in researching, guiding, and advising on many notable changes that have been implemented at the city. These include the four-ten's work schedule, improved competitive pay practices, enhanced leave policies, the Workday H-I-R-I-S, the Employee Essentials Training Program, employee relations activities, and other related projects that have set Provo apart as a leader in local government. His guidance is invaluable to the other members of the management team and he is recognized as a trusted colleague among his peers. His staff have nothing but positive things to say about his leadership and greatly appreciate the environment he fosters, encouraging growth and high performance. So with that, I will now ask for your advice and consent for Daniel Softly to become our new Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, mayor. Is there any questions for the mayor? Any council discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on the implied motion.
I was just going to say this is a wonderful move.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
That's unanimous, seven oh. And we are so excited to have this position and Daniel in it.
All right, so come on up, Daniel. He's got his family with him and his wife and, I mean, I can tell which ones are he and his grandson. I think I saw his grandson. That's perfect, apparently, he told me. That's perfect. We would want him to join us. And then Judge will ask you to step up and now what we'll do, Kim, it's he's a little like swearing to marry the city. So if you hold the Bible and you'll take it from here.
Hi, or gee, after me. Hi, Daniel Stephen Ross Softly do solemnly swear.
Hi, Daniel Stephen Ross Softly do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
I just told him, you know, because he's a big deal now, he has to say something at least to the council.
I was trying to get away uh the confusion there. Um I I really don't have much to say. I don't, I'm not much for speeches. Um I just want to give a heartfelt thanks to the council uh for their uh approval of this appointment to Scott Henderson, the mayor, and the administration for putting their trust in me. Uh it's not something that I take lightly, uh oath or not. Um it is something that is near and dear to my heart and I promise that I will uh live up to everything that has been entrusted with me. And thank you.
All right, next we have an implied motion on an ordinance admitting Provo City code regarding defined nuisances. And this will be presented by Scott Johnson. All right, sorry. Go ahead, Scott.
You're good. Thank you, um Chair McKay, Mayor Kufusi, and council members. Um you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, um I brought this ordinance amendment to you in the work session. Um the second move it forward. Here we go. Um so basically, the the idea behind this is um as a council, you've often asked myself um and my predecessors, what what can you do to help us do our job better? This is an ordinance amendment that I believe will help me do my job better in enforcing um on some of the more difficult properties throughout the city of Provo. Uh when we have properties that have criminal activity going on that, you know, police handle the criminal activity that's taking place. Um but there have been um properties in the past that have had reoccurring instances of criminal activity going on. And neighbors feel that that's a nuisance and should be abated. We agree. In code, we would like for that to be added in so that we can enforce on that as a direct nuisance. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Scott? Any questions for Scott? Becky Bogdan.
Thank you, Scott, for bringing this, because I, like I said in the work meeting, I do appreciate this.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate you guys, too.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're good, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we'd like to open up this item for public comment. Public hearing, Brian. Does it matter if I say public comment or public hearing?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, any more council discussion? We will vote on the implied motion. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan, yes. Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
That passes unanimously, seven oh. Thanks, Scott. Now we've made more work for you. All right, we have continued item number nine. So if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council Meeting by unanimous consent. We did good.
Wow.
That's good.
That was a really lovely meeting.